This is Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission meeting on Monday, September 16th, 2024, 7:00 PM. I'd like to record the attendance that all are here except for Ryan Bruno, who was tied up in a business meeting. So we have six of the seven. I'd like to ask everybody to now stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well. I have a motion to approve the current agenda.
So moved.
Support. Moved by a member, Nordike, supported by a member, Reese. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Is there any Article Four, is there any conflict of interest that people can foresee today's meeting?
Nope.
None noted. Moving on, Article Five. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the July 15th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Support. Moved by a member, Nordike, supported by a member, Reese. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero on that one. Uh, next one is approve the minutes of the August 7th, 2024 work session. Have a motion.
Move to approve.
Support. Member Reese moved to support. Member trustee Norduk, uh, supported it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you all. I'd like to now acknowledge any visitors and those wishing to speak on non-agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience? Is there anybody online?
No, yeah, mine.
Let me see. Okay. Okay, moving on.
Chairman Moxley, we want to note to the audience that we don't have public hearings for either action that's in front of us. So if somebody's here to speak about one of the items that they may want to speak now as opposed to waiting.
This is your big chance.
Yeah, we do not have any public hearings as it relates to the agenda item. So if you want to speak about an agenda item, now would be your chance. Yes. Unless you're presenting for the agenda item. Sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't mean to speak in that.
Ford, give us your name and address.
My name is John McGovern. My address, my business address is 5505 36th Street. Been at this location for 38 years. Um, once again, I had pretty short notice about the meeting, so I only found out about two o'clock this afternoon. And I had some other commitments between now and then. I just want to indicate, uh, that what the plans that I reviewed for, build the construction project immediately to my west. Um, as I stated in the previous meeting, does impact my current usage and rights that I have, had for the last 38 years on, on the shared drive. I have two shared drives, one on the east, one on the west. Um, there is, there has been continuous use for ingress on one property and then egress on the other property, both sides. Uh, what this elevated bifurcation of my drive does is it does negatively reduce my ability to bring in equipment to service my, air conditioner, my generator, um, other equipment I've got there on the north, north, or sorry, south, west corner of the building. And also for roof maintenance, which is common. So I just want to state that it does have a negative impact by taking away the use that I've had. I did have a little bit of a question, again, I haven't a lot of time to read this, but I'm reading, uh, section 20, the buffer yard requirement. Am I reading this correct on the column that says east? That that applies to the, period between myself and the construction project?
Um, what I'll do is take all your comments and then I'll refer to them in the staff review.
Okay. Uh, because the way I'm interpreting this, which I believe is correct. Um, the buffer requirements on west, north and south seem to be fairly compliant, but what deals on, the zone between my building and the construction project is significantly less than the requirement. I have a 35 foot setback from the property line to the edge of my building, which is a pretty noticeable zone of, uh, buffer. What I'm reading here is a pretty small buffer by the adjacent property owner. So to some degree, I feel like it's my property providing the, the presentation of buffer more so than this project. Again, I'm not sure if I'm reading that correctly, but that's how I'm seeing it. So, uh, anyways, I do, I do think this property, the change to my shared drive is, is affecting me negatively. I just want to go over it for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGovern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Give us your name and address.
Yeah, good afternoon, or good evening. My name's Todd, my name's Todd Shebor, uh, 400 Renaissance Center, Detroit, Michigan. Uh, we are, we are here with Quick Trip and I just want to get, for, make sure that we are on the same page. I know it was item eight on the agenda. Um, and I guess, are you, are you saying that that there won't, will not be discussion on that, uh, on that today? I know it says table next to it, but that's why I just want to make sure we had a, we're all on the same page.
That item, we will ask you to.
Okay, perfect.
Come up and talk.
Perfect.
As the applicant.
Yep, thanks.
Yes. Again, anybody have any comments, general comments? Anything online? Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, we'll move now to Article Seven. Case number 243827. Andrea.
Okay, so the next case on our agenda is 5441 36th Street. And John McGovern, who was the last public commenter, um, is the neighbor and was referring to that property. So I'm going to start by just clarifying the question that he had asked. Um, the buffer yard that we are referring to that's not compliant with the ordinance for buffer yards is, the east property line which faces Mr. McGovern's property. Um, and this is not the first time that I have brought this request to the planning commission. Um, when we look at what is required per chapter 20 of our zoning ordinance that handles buffer yards, there is a distance from the property line that all of the required plant material is to be provided. In this case, it is a buffer yard C, which means that all required plant material is supposed to be within 20, feet of the property line. The applicant has provided adequate part, um, adequate landscaping material. It just has not been provided within that 20 feet. And I'm proving incompetent to actually get this up, get the site plan up. Or else I could demonstrate, but if you look on page, I think it's about 14 of your packet. You will be able to see the site plan.
You mean 17?
Yep, 17. So this is not actually the landscaping plan, but you, you can see, I'll pull it up. Give me just a minute. Thank you for being patient. Now I'm not going to be able to do it right this second. It's in a different packet.
Member Reese.
Um, Andrea, I, I understand you say buffer yard as far as the landscaping, but is the setback of the building meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So the building setbacks are okay. We're, the concern is related to the landscaping in the buffer yard. They have an adequate amount of landscaping, it's just maybe not necessarily where we generally would like to see it.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the retaining wall can go right up against the property line?
The retaining wall is not right across the property. It's actually, now you can actually see this.
The foundation for the retaining wall is close to the property line.
On page 17 of your packet.
And isn't the black line the property line? So isn't that right next to it?
The property line is the hatched black line. All the gray area is where the concrete will be provided on the site plan.
Right.
The white area in between is a seven, a seven foot grassed area. And then next to that, seven feet west of the property line is where the retaining wall starts.
Vertical portion of it.
Yes. And then it goes from about two feet to about eight feet.
And they had to do that because the foundation or footing to hold up their retaining wall, extends quite a bit to the east side of the vertical portion.
Yeah.
Civil engineering background. Okay, anything else?
That's really the difference. And then if you look, this is exactly the same site plan that was provided at the last hearing, except for the applicant has extended the driveway so that it's compliant with a standalone. If, if the applicant was only providing a driveway without any of the shared driveway from the property to the east, there, the width of this driveway would be compliant with our standards. Therefore, they don't require an easement, which was one of the big sticking points. So when we talk about the buffer, the only thing the planning commission is, is looking at changing or approving, or saying that they need to be compliant is the location of the plant material within that 20 feet. The rest of the site is fully compliant for parking, setbacks, drive aisles. Everything else is compliant. And Eric Thorne, for those of you who may not have met him, is our township engineer. And he can answer any questions, um, that the planning commission was concerned with about any drainage on the site.
And the curb cut has been approved by Kent County Road Commission?
Yes, that's correct. And that is in your packet as well.
Page 21.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could, Mr. Nordick, thank you. If I could ask the planning director a question?
Yes.
Andrea, um, if we were to ask them to follow the requirement for the buffer yard, what would that require or entail them to do?
So all they would be doing is moving the plant material that they've already provided, into the east portion of the 20 feet. Right now, they have it provided, but it's tucked, I'm sorry that I can't pull it up. Um, but they've tucked it within some of the other areas on site. They would just be moving that over and kind of shoving it into that 20 feet instead of providing it spread throughout the site.
And if memory serves, we allowed that with other, uh, designs in the past, is that accurate?
We have, I believe that there's been two in the recent, last couple of months that we've allowed, plant material to be outside of the required buffer yard.
Thank you.
Member Reese.
Point of clarification, you said they would be relocating it to the 20 feet. I'm assuming you mean the seven feet that's left between the wall and the lot line?
Seven feet, four inches.
That's one of the options. They actually do have some of the plant material there, but here, if, if, can you see my mouse? You should be able to look at what I'm sharing. Um, they could move that into the northern portion of their east buffer yard.
Okay.
But that is a retention pond. So their fear and their concern with not putting it right there is that, it would be on an incline, which would then prevent the trees from being able to adequately grow.
There's really no point in putting it there, so, okay.
Any other questions from the planning commission members? Any other comments? Uh, Eric, do you have anything to add to that?
I think it's, um, I think it's, it is what you see there. Um, the retaining wall being offset from an engineering standpoint, I would certainly have concerns that there's not a lot of room off that property line. I know when we initially talked with the developer, the applicant, they were trying to put that wall right on the property line, which was kind of a hard no, because just from a constructability standpoint, it was very difficult, impossible to really fill the wall on a property line where you don't have a grading agreement to do anywhere next door. If I had any concerns looking at this, my concern would still be building that wall and grading the remaining parcel, east of the wall at seven foot, four inches without infringing on the neighboring parcel, as well as, they're going to have to, it looks like, because they're going to cut that driveway, that shared driveway. I would be, you know, if I was the neighboring parcel, I would be darn sure that that was surveyed correctly and not on the property line. Other than that, there's no reason they can't do what they proposed here. There's just some constructability nuances that as an engineer would kind of concern me, but again, not, not impossible to do. Drainage wise, um, all the water, given the topography, there's still a low spot. Um, it's kind of looks like it's in the north, northwest of the, um, the neighbor parcel. 5505 36th Street. This parcel, obviously, it didn't do anything to change that grading, so water will still drain there. Their detention pond actually releases water to that low spot. Um, the difference now versus before this development is it will release it at a controlled rate that's according to our stormwater ordinance. So it should actually improve drainage in that respect. And that water drains into, it looks like a 10-point easement along the back of these two properties and that property to the east and into road commission facilities. That's really all I have for two cents, really just kind of constructability standpoint. It's, I, for what it is, I don't see any reason that they have a concern that drainage would worsen. I would expect it to improve, um, given that there isn't a grading agreement with the neighbor. I could see there might be some bonding of water along that west parcel, some west property line and his parcel. Um, you know, I, I think, I, I can certainly understand why you would not give a grading agreement as a property owner, but at the same time, I think the best thing to do would be to try to upgrade that to the flow, so that nothing gets trapped along that wall or the west side of that property.
I have a question for you, Eric. Uh, it looks like the footing, the east side of the footing for the retaining wall is about a foot off the property line. Is that correct?
Um, I believe that's, I don't have.
It's not right on the property line?
Yeah, no, it's, it's very close.
Okay. Hang on a second. Also, um, when they excavate for the footing and build the retaining wall, the dirt that they take out is, will be put to the left side or to the west side and not onto the neighbor's property?
It would have to be.
Okay, okay.
Again, not impossible, but if I was the engineer on site watching, then it would be, it would, there would be difficulties doing it, but not impossible.
Okay, any other staff comments?
I have a question. Andrea, refresh my memory, is this the applicant that was told to stop building and then the builder kept building?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a couple procedural points? So what will happen if this is approved? I would like to add one other, in addition to the, um, conditions that I put forth in the staff report, I would ask that the planning commission add one, which would be all, see, all fees associated with the approved, with this approval would be paid by the applicant in advance. Um, and then procedurally, what will happen is if this is approved, um, we'll make sure that there's a soil erosion permit in place. And then the, then per section 25024A of the zoning ordinance, we would, I would issue a written notice to dissolve the cease and desist. And that would allow the building department to go back and review and reissue their permit. That is now an expired permit, so the building department may require a whole new submission. Um, but that will be the process from a planning commission, yeah.
Yes, member Nordike.
Uh, now, follow up question for Andrea. Can we, uh, ask for a, a bond as it relates to the soil erosion agreement? Would that be?
Yeah, that would be appropriate, yep.
Okay.
We're rolling.
With, uh, was anything, any follow-up done on the failure to cease and desist? I mean, I know that we were talking, was anything done with that, anything filed with the county or anything?
So there, the citation was filed. At this point, we're waiting to see what happens here.
Good.
Um, and then we will likely, um, rescind that. And just the timing and the cost associated with lawyer fees and all that will be the consequence of, of their actions.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, at this point, I'd ask that the applicant, Mr. Baker, come forward and give us, uh, your rationale and introduce your engineer, I take it?
Uh, yes, my name is Josh Baker. I'm the, I guess, the source of all the drama here. Um, I lived in Cascade my whole life. My mother's buried in Cascade Cemetery. I'm 46. Only reason I was able to get this building is Dr. Smiegel, who my dogs have gone to, sold it to me. As soon as I bought the building, I went and saw Mr. McGovern, asked him, he signed a document, all the, I, again, I'm so hat in hand, I, I, I would repave the whole road. I would do anything anybody wants. I will put plants anywhere, I'll put any bond you want up. I'm a living human, I got bamboozled. I brought a guy in, engineers to help me. The other builder is fired, can bleed. I really wish I used Quest, um, they're from my kid's elementary school, but I live and learn. So that's all I can say. Uh, we've tried to be compliant with everything. I brought Jim here. Um, again, like Mr. McGovern said, it would affect his generator and stuff. All that's on the, uh, south side of my, you don't, it's not even down by the building, so I don't know. It's right by the road, but okay. Um, yeah, I, I'll do anything you guys want. I, again, I just want to build my building. Tell me anything and I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker. Please introduce yourself.
Jim Vannenberg from JBB Architects. Um, I'm going to clarify a few things on the foundation of the retaining wall. We got what's called the cantilevered foundation. So the majority of that foundation and footing is on the property side, the west side. And we only have a two foot six foundation from the vertical part of the foundation wall. So we're like five feet away from the property line. So it's not going to be a problem.
Okay.
Also, the width of the drive, uh, right now, the existing, it basically, the property line goes right down the middle. So you got 12 feet on one side, 12 feet on the other side. Okay? So there's plenty of room for a vehicle, which I show my truck, I don't know if you got the pictures or not, but I show my truck alongside of the property line. There's plenty of room for a vehicle to go down on the east side of the property line. Plus, he's got another seven feet to the retaining wall. So basically, there's like 20 feet there. So to access his side of the property from the retaining wall isn't going to be a problem either. Okay? Uh, as for the landscaping, you know, I, I did what I could and I could totally bombard the, what would be, be the northeast side of the property. There's a hill there, I mean, this whole thick slant, there's a, there's a grade problem on the site. There always has been and there is. So I could bombard and put all the plants within the buffer yard there and meet the requirements probably, but you know, it'd look ridiculous, it wouldn't function and half the plants would probably die.
And nobody would see them.
Well, yeah, no one would see them anyway, they're in the northeast corner.
Yeah.
So.
Dropping down.
You know, you got a couple warehouses back there, no one's going to see it. So, um, if you got any other questions or concerns, I'll gladly address them.
Member Nordike.
Yes, um, the, the owner said that he had terminated the previous contractor.
Yes.
Has he picked another one? Did he mention a, a company?
We're trying to get through this process first, but I do have to ask Josh.
Adam Broll, he owns Quest, they do a lot of sponsoring for Pine Ridge and whatnot. I mean, I've met with the Caning Concrete and I've talked with the Fault Filters. So there's only like two projects and Adam's more an offer to come in and oversee it. So I, he's gone, terminated.
So you, you have a reputable builder now?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, they came over, yes, sir, yes, sir.
I have five suggestions to the reputable that I could throw by Josh too, if he wants, so.
No, I, just as long as there's a reputable builder.
No, it's.
So the.
Roll on.
The area between the retaining wall and the property line, is that going to be graded? Is that going to be flattened out?
It's going to be the same as the existing is right now. It's, that's, that's the plan. If he wants it graded, so it, you know, it, that's fine, Josh, we all will grade it any way he wants. But the idea is to keep it, he wanted it to keep it the way it is. So what we're doing is we're starting to actually.
Would you say he, Mr. Governor? Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I should say neighbor to the east.
That's fine.
Um, you know, that's why we have the retaining wall so far in. I went as far west as I could to keep a proper drive to access the building.
Okay.
So that's in, that's where the retaining wall is.
So you're willing to work with him to grade it, not create it?
Sure, Josh, Josh will, he'll do anything.
Great, thank you. Member Reese, is the seven feet going to be paved, gravel, grass?
Uh, it can be grass. If you look at the landscaping plan, I do have some bushes that are shown in there. Uh, I, I'm not sure if it's in this one or not. I think it is, I think it's called out down by the trash area.
I think I see that.
Beginning.
Yep.
Um, you know, I just didn't want to do it down the whole, the whole way. If, if, you know, I can relocate some and put them down the whole way and that's seven foot, we can throw some bushes in there.
Thank you. Now, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, further discussion by, uh, members of the planning commission.
I feel like we've made these guys wait quite a while at this point. Sorry, I didn't know we were raising hands.
I, I was just going to say that, I mean, they've, uh, extended the driveway 15 feet to the west. That gives them a 27-foot wide approach. Um, that's wider than what was there originally shared between the two buildings. The neighbor still has his 12 feet plus the seven. So it seems to me that he has adequate space to access the side of his building as well, based on where the, where the wall would be.
Any other discussion?
Take a crack at it if you'd like.
Do me a favor, when you take a crack at it, put in there that they'll work with him on the grading, however.
That would.
You can amend it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Member Nordike.
Uh, before I do, um, Andrea, am I, am I allowed to put anything on there about the builder? That be inappropriate, appropriate? That's why I'm asking.
It's illegal.
I, yeah, I don't believe so.
Understood. You don't think so either?
No, the way I read that opinion, I don't think you can.
But he said he's going to work with one, so.
Right.
All right, fair enough. Uh, make a recommendation in, case number 243827, that, uh, we approve with the following provisions, that the required buffer yard planning on the east side of the subject property are reduced to accommodate the shared access with 5505 36th Street. Am I reading the right recommendations, Andrea?
You are.
Yeah.
Excellent. Uh, furthermore, the following conditions shall be placed on the approval of the application. And plans submitted by the applicant, signed dated stamp by the planning director shall constitute the approved plans, except if plan elements are amended in this resolution. Uh, that the use shall operate according to the application and per the testimony of the applicant. Any proposed signage must be reviewed and approved in accordance with CCT sign ordinance standards. All soil erosion and sediment control plans are approved by the Kent County Road Commission, that the applicant secures a $100,000 soil erosion bond. Did you want to add, Alan?
Uh, that they're, that they will work with, uh, the neighbor to the, is that west?
Yeah.
Number to the west to grade the property between the property line and the retaining wall, to the neighbor's liking, within reason.
East.
Exactly.
East.
Yeah. And then all fees associated, uh, with this approval would be paid in advance of construction. And staff will dissolve the cease and desist and allow the applicant to, uh, work with the building department moving forward. And then also, the first condition that you read.
Yes.
The part where it says except, we need that. The part where it says except, do we need that? Except the plan elements are amended in this resolution or do not meet the requirements of these zoning ordinance? That seems a little wishy washy to me, but. There. I I understand.
Yeah.
Asking if that needs to be there.
You can take it out. We don't have a date on this, so I'm gonna work with the applicant to make sure every little element is in the approved plan, so. You can leave it as a period.
Alright, so then I think except if uh plan elements are amended by the planning director at her sole discretion.
I wanna make sure we got the correct address here. It's five four four one thirty six street.
This one is. The one you read. That's why did I read the wrong one?
No.
You read it right. You just, he didn't.
That's good. We're good.
So this is important.
I'd second that.
Okay, motion by member Nordike, seconded by member Roland. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're good.
Go celebrate.
Yeah.
They are gonna be so happy to not have to work with me again.
Let's not advertise.
Well, there are so many comments that could be made.
Okay, uh, moving on to article eight. Uh, case number twenty four thirty eight forty three. Uh, applicant QuickTrip.
Uh, make a motion to remove him from the table.
Right, second. Okay, motion by member Reese uh to remove, uh, supported by member Roland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six zero.
We actually didn't do that for the last.
Would you like me to remove from the table? Make a motion to remove uh case number twenty four thirty eight twenty seven for fifty four forty one thirty six street from the table as well.
Support.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, it was a motion by member Reese, supported by member Nordike. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Leslie's not gonna be happy with that.
Six zero. Okay, so. Move on.
Uh, I think we did, so we're waiting for Andrea's uh.
Yeah, so we're back at fifty nine oh five Broadmore. Um, this applicant has has came to us, I believe, on. July fifteenth, and this was tabled with a request from the planning commission to provide more information. And revise the site accordingly. They have provided um. The original application was about eight acres on an eleven acre site, and they have removed the. Um, exterior or the truck parking from the east side of the property and. The rest of the site remains almost the same. There's still two um. Oh, I'm sorry, why am I? There's still two awnings, one for diesel pumps, one for um regular vehicles on the south side of the property. Um, and the site essentially has been shifted to the west with a little bit of a change in the location of the driveways. Um, proposed on Patterson. There's now a one acre parcel that is vacant. Um, and does not show any cross access easement on the north side of the property, but is not. Allocated to be green space or open space by the applicant. So there have been some changes that have been uh. Been made to the site, however, um, there's still has just been one paragraph added. To the market study to address community benefits. Um, the applicant has met with planning staff on multiple occasions. Property history since our last meeting is laid out in your staff review, so I won't go. Through all of that today. Um, I do wanna know, on in front of you, there's actually two, there's a a document that gives the planning commission kind of two directions. And provides further feedback of how we could move forward with this. Um, one of those would be if you feel like what has been provided by the planning or by the. Applicant is never really gonna get to a point that the planning commission is comfortable with recommending this to to the board for approval. You can actually make um a motion at this point. Um, in accordance with the second motion on the sheet right in front of you. Um, the first motion, though, would actually give you um some added items. It to make you feel more comfortable with this. Um, those include, you know, striping out areas that should not, where trucks. Cannot be parked, providing signage, and these are kind of in line with what was provided from Caledonia. Um, I do wanna speak a little bit to that. Um, I've been going back and forth with the applicant, but then it also had a conversation with. Uh, Ms. Linay Wells, who is the staff planner for Caledonia, who has a planning commissioner. Um, who kinda sits in in Timmy's position where he's on the board, but he's also um on the planning commission, and he had said. You know, this looks similar to uses that we have approved. They were also mentioned in your last um staff report, and that would be the circle K. Further south on Broadmore. They had stated that they approved, you know, a truck stop, or at least it has diesel. Diesel pumps and parking uh for diesel large semi trucks, and it had turned into. Quite an issue of enforcement for. Uh, trucks idling, trucks coming in and parking there, um, and just. Just getting, you know, just actually enforcing it became an almost everyday process, and that trend continued. With the Meyer that was also um mentioned in your last staff report, that's on the east side of Broadmore. Uh, near that circle K. Uh, so I've provided some details of the problems that they've had. In your staff report, I won't go into them again in detail, but this is something I think the planning commission. You know, should consider as they're determining if this is the appropriate use for this site. Um, is there any other questions from the planning commission?
Yes.
I have a question for Andrea.
Yes.
Alright, um, Andrea, have they revised their community benefits? I'm looking at packet page thirty seven, or is that? Uh, the same community benefits as they listed before?
Um. Yeah, the the community benefits that were provided by the applicant were essentially jobs. That they were bringing a site that was currently um being used for rubbish and was in dis, you know, was was. Forget the exact word that they were used, but it said under what?
But this is the extent of the community benefits that they're wishing to provide. I mean, just, just this.
Correct. The applicant did meet with their attorney to see if there was possibility to um, to provide other. Community benefits, um, but nothing has been presented uh to be added to the packet today. The applicant may be able to speak further to that, but as far as um, anything that's been provided to me, there has not been anything further than.
Number Reese.
Revitalizing a site that.
The zoning of this site is B two, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
So there's an underlying zone district for this. The zoning is P U D. So when we look at this, it's, but the underlying zone district.
I mean, generally, we would only allow, uh, I've gone off the top of my head here, but I think it's a three acre minimum parcel size.
Correct.
So on, does that P U D say that the parcel can be smaller than three acres? Then, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm referring more or less to that one acre tract that's, I think, to the.
The P U D does not speak to that.
Okay.
And I even have, you know, trying to review quickly to see if the underlying zone district was in fact B two, but that does seem correct.
So that would, if if that, if we didn't allow for a a one acre. Uh, parcel to be right there, then that would have to be kinda included in their parcel, right? And maybe it's green space, maybe whatever it is, but.
Correct.
Okay.
I would say, though, generally, if we're looking at a B two, kind of a, a general commercial, one acre is not. Is not a horrible um size for a general. Tell, tell that to who?
Okay.
Andrea, I have a question for you. How how did this uh P U D come about? What's the history on this?
So this P U D was um actually agreed upon. It was initiated by the. Cascade Charter Township in two thousand fifteen. Um, and the applicant, or the township worked with the applicant to establish allowed uses for the planned unit development here.
You have more?
Um, good.
Good evening. I can shut some more light on that. Um, so yeah, this P U D, I believe, was in conjunction with Caledonia and the city of Kentwood too, who also took. An active role in this and did a study of the area and for the master plans that were in place back then in the development. That was targeted back in two thousand and fifteen, it was. Thought to be the right decision to implement a P U D back in two thousand and fifteen. So it was actually a collaboration about the regional development of that area of the township. And others.
Our township came up with it on our own and then got a couple other townships involved.
I'm not sure who initiated it. That was just the end result.
Okay.
I think the idea back then was that it was gonna be more office space and obviously that's a use that isn't really as needed now, but. Um, but yeah, there was like, uh. There were meetings between, it was called the Four Corners area, I think, if I remember right, Gaines, Caledonia and Kentwood. And I remember.
Yeah.
Uh, Steve coming in and out of the meetings, giving us kinda updates as to where things were going with that, but.
Upset.
Upset. Trying to bring everybody up to speed. Gas stations were not in that beauty, though.
Or.
I'm thinking they shouldn't be now.
Schools, athletic places, office building, I don't remember what else, but there was a host of.
Medical.
Yeah, minimal impact.
Television stations.
Right.
Television.
Funeral homes. It's a very interesting conglomerate.
Yeah, I see more as an office. Turn to the not, at gas stations. Parking, the trucks.
So one more question. Do these other Caledonian township in Kentwood, do they have any say in this parcel?
No. No, this regulated zone through Cascade Charter Township.
But they did make their opinions known about the problems they're having with the current facility similar to this.
As I'm having lots of trouble with issues in the hotel district, I really don't wanna start another one.
Well, then I make a motion. I make a motion to recommend that the township board not consent to an amendment to the. Conditions contained in ordinance number three of two thousand fifteen.
If I could, um, we 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 had a applicant, I think, drive a pretty extensive amount of time. Should we? Be forward denying it? Should we give them an opportunity to speak?
I think so.
Trustee, the owner of the property. If you, if you're gonna speak, you need to address the chair. Need to come up here so we can record the minutes.
Right.
Come on up.
I'm William Asco. I'm the trustee of the trust that owns the property. You were just talking about what happened in two thousand and fifteen, and I can speak to it if you would like.
Sure, great.
Um, Steve. Well, Steve Peterson approached me. Um, and he said, uh, we would like to change the zoning of the property to promote interest and marketability in the property. And we're just asking you to give us some time, and he asked us to come out and meet with him, and I did. My brother-in-law was with me. And um, they had a plan, uh, they had their reasoning uh of why it would be this P U D ninety five. And all they asked for was acquiescence. Um, the former zoning would not have allowed for. Any of this type of development. And so I acquiesced. I I never heard anything about other communities or or uh townships having a say in this or. Or speaking to it, but I did acquiesce. And again, the reason was to promote interest in marketability. We were not actively trying to sell it, uh, but I can tell you in the last nine years, there has been no interest in this property.
Really?
Yep.
That's surprising.
So that's what I wanted you all to know. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any members have questions?
I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion.
Well, I think we wanted to let the, I I think a couple of the members suggested the applicant speak, so, but.
Okay, come on up.
Hi, hi again. Yeah, my name's Todd Shevor. Uh, I'm counsel for QuickTrip uh on this. Um, I, we we have the presentation. Certainly, I know it sounds like the the commission doesn't want us to go through. I I just, I just wanna. I wanna make sure we're all talking the same thing, and in particular, um, with respect to the other fuel stations. Um, that that are having issues on those, on those in the neighboring township. Um, you know, a, the, I think, the reason why they're having those issues is that they allow for truck parking as part of that site plan. You look at the circle K, they had seven, seven truck, truck spots, and then they were double parking in them. So you're, you're getting fourteen that were there. And the way that the site layout was also set up, you have this huge, you have this huge expansive area behind the store. Where where trucks, where trucks were also being allowed to park. And in and I know the, I know the 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 commission is concerned, they don't wanna have. And and deal with issues that they are dealing with. And I think that's why QuickTrip took the time to eliminate. Any type of truck parking as part of this site plan, so that you wouldn't have those types of issues. And the way that the site plan's been redesigned, so you don't have these expansive areas where trucks can sit there and idle. And and park on the side. And and so I just, I just, I just wanna make sure that the, that the commission on, just. Fully appreciates that, just because we've put a lot of time and effort into addressing the concerns that you all had when we heard last time. Um, and, you know, I. If 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 circle K is doing things, it's just, it's it's unfortunate if their, their behavior gets then and put on us. Um, because that's, that's, we're not gonna allow that. Um, we went through the whole thing. I know last time we talked about our security. We monitor the the site from every, every single uh angle. I think that's why. In the consent decree that's being entered into on the circle K property, they have to have a, they have to have a security team to be out there. And monitor, make sure that trucks aren't being there. They're, they're, they weren't having the eyes on the property like we intend to do. And 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 we intend not to have truck parking at all, so that you don't get into that situation where we're having to undo something. So just wanna make sure that the, that the, that the board and the commission sort of understood at least what the difference was, that it is. There is differences between the two.
I appreciate that. Uh, question, member Reese.
Uh, maybe this is the right time to say this, but I uh. In the last seven days, I visited nearly a half dozen QuickTrip locations. And across three states, and all of them did not have the problems. That Caledonian Township is reporting, and they all had signage. And very clearly marked areas where you can and can't park and how long you can be there. And I think Caledonia's problems are brought on by Caledonia. I think if we did something here, I think we could do a much better job of it. And just, that's my observation.
Good research. Thank you, member Nordike.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask the applicant a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, your community benefits, just to be clear, if I could just summarize them, or you're going to add twenty five to thirty jobs? And only use five acres, a twelve acre site? Is that, am I presenting that properly? That that's your intent for us to to, your ask of us to mod, make a pretty significant modification to a P U D?
Yeah, so um, that's not the, the strict extent of, you know, the community benefits. It's a eleven acre parcel. Um, we're unlocking the potential value. Um, there's uh, not only just the QuickTrip jobs that will be in there. But whatever other businesses come in because we are there and updating the property, that's additional jobs, additional tax revenue. Um, for the township. Um, and then uh, the one acre parcel that you mentioned, that could be. Um, green space, uh, depending on how the township wanted, wanted to see that. It could be green space, or we can market that out for um, small retail space. Or um, small restaurant um type thing. Um. Uh, we, on average, our store locations um generate about one point three million dollars in state and local taxes. Um. We, I know it's not necessarily a a direct community benefit, but our employees are generally career employees. Um, twenty plus years. Um, I was started in the stores as an overnight manager. Um, I've worked my way in the service center, security center. I was started in the stores as an overnight manager. I've worked my way into the service center, security center, and then now I'm into the real estate side for the company, so that's a really big benefit is being able to move and progress within the company. We do a lot of stuff for the employees, scholarships, tuition assistance, daycare assistance, and those employees would be coming from the community. We would bring trainers in to train, and then once the employees are trained up, those trainers would move on and train at the next location. So all the, the majority of employees would be coming from Cascade Township.
Member Reese?
So on my little trip to look at QuickTrips, I couldn't help but notice a community benefit along an interstate, and I forget which one, in Minnesota or Wisconsin, where there were some pretty nice sports fields that were sponsored by QuickTrip on the side of the road. I'd like to see a benefit more on that type of level than on the level of what you're speaking to. Something creative like that, that's a little outside of the box.
Yeah, and we, you know, we've done that in the past. We've worked with several, you know, municipalities on certain things. We've done backpack drives for back to school. We've done code drives for the winters. We've done community parks, stuff like that, and that's, you know, that's something that we're definitely as a company, willing to to take a look at and work with the township.
If I, yeah, if I may, just quick, I I did have a conversation with the city attorney. We we have been discussing, you know, if there is a, if there is a fund, you know, for for additional benefit associated with that, we just haven't, we just haven't worked out the the details on on how that can be done. Not that it, not that it's a reluctance on the company's part. We've just been discussing how that can actually be done, because it's, it's not set forth in the ordinance, and it's not set forth in the existing PUD.
That's fine, as long as you're still open to the conversation.
One hundred percent.
That's what we need to hear, right?
I think it'd be nice if it was listed in their proposal that it's something they're considering, but I don't see it, so that that's a concern, so.
Other questions for the representatives?
I was just gonna say, the other, the other thing is, we 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 want to make sure that that we're going down the right path. We don't want it to be obviously challenged by somebody else that that comes up and says, well, the the board really didn't have that authority to to enter into it because the financial aspect or or what have you. So we're, that's why, that's where we've been having discussions with the township attorneys. Actually, I was actually hoping, I thought he was going to be here so that we could continue that discussion actually before this meeting. Unfortunately, he wasn't. And and I left a message for him last week as well, so we're, I'm trying. We're we're absolutely trying.
Thank you. Thank you.
For me, if we were to entertain this.
Well, first of all, I have a motion on the floor.
It hasn't been supported.
Somebody wants to support it, okay?
Push my member Roland?
Nope.
Supported by Member Richardson. Please restate your motion.
My motion, I make a motion to recommend that the Township Board not consent to amendment, to amend the amendment to the condition contained in ordinance number three of two thousand and fifteen.
We need to do this by voice vote individually?
Probably wouldn't hurt, considering that it may not be unanimous.
Yeah.
If I could ask the member if he might be willing to consider tabling his motion to see if they come back with something.
No. Okay, got the motion on the floor. It's been supported. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Who is opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, four to two, motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Article nine. We have any visitors who have anything to add? Anybody online? Okay, article ten, other business. What we see?
It's my observation with experience outside of Cascade as well as in Cascade, that any time the township initiates a zoning ordinance change to like a PUD amendment or something, it does not end favorably for either party. It's just my observation. I have yet to see one stick. They always end up getting amended, and there always seems to be a lot of usually commotion from the community, although we didn't really see that in this one, but but I just, that's my observation. I throwing that out there as a thing to remember in the future, if a planning director or something says, you know, we should consider changing the zoning here, maybe it will spur development in this area. It's hard to predict what's going to happen in the future and to narrow it down that specific. It's not always the right way to go.
Other comments, Member Nordic?
We have our city township manager here. I would love to hear from him. Thank you so much for coming. If any updates you're willing to share with us, what what's going on in the township, what's coming, anything like that. I think it's always good to hear from you when you're here.
Sure. I came to really support Andrea and Eric tonight, and anyway, it's some items on the agenda that we're going to create some conversation. I do agree with Member Reese's comments in regards to PUDs and how they don't always end favorably for both the community and the applicant. I think there are some things that Planning Director has that could be looked at in regards to, especially in a case like this, taking the PUD, PUD back to probably original zoning and working with that property owner, if that was something that they would consider. So I think there's some more work we can do there. But back to the the township, probably the most newsworthy item is we just had a very successful Heritage Festival on Saturday. It was on, located at this new stone house on the church grounds, the museum grounds, all along Orange Avenue. And I would say, we've estimated, but the grounds were so massive, I think we probably had over two thousand people that attended on Saturday in a matter of in under four hours. We had some great discussion about the stone house, what we can do with that in the future to actually activate that site. It did create some business for the local businesses, which, you know, as that event being sponsored by the Downtown Development Authority, that is their role. That's the that's what that authority is meant to do. So it was very encouraging to see something like that take take place and that everybody was so well, it was so well received. It was really low hanging fruit. It was real basic stuff that we did to get the community out and and celebrate the the preservation in history of Cascade. Other things happening in the township, we do have the Reimagine Cat, the Village in Cascade. We're working with a consultant on that through the DDA and the Board of Trustees in regards to what the future of the village area could look like from a public use space, which clearly incorporates the Tuffy site and the doctor's office and all of Tassel Park. Upgrades the the museum and maybe some public private partnerships with the the shopping plaza there as well, working with those owners. We continue to look at operations and procedures and policies every day in the township and continue to make improvements on a lot of fronts. I know you all got an email last week, and I follow-up email from myself. But just, we're always evaluating where we're going, how we can do things better, and looking at every opportunity we have to continue to make Cascade the great place that it is. And I I think at this point, I'm thinking what else there is. Um, I think that's all I have for tonight. There's any specific questions, I'm here to absolutely answer them.
You're reaching out for a new zoning administrator?
We are. It is, it is out there now, Planning and Zoning Administrator, yes. In the interim, we've talked with the Sheriff's Office. We just met with them this morning, Andrea and I did, in regards to zoning and code enforcement and the assistance that they can provide. They actually do provide more assistance in some other communities than what Cascade was utilizing them for. So we're definitely going to hit them up for that.
Reverts to ask.
Yep. And speaking of staffing, we do have a new Parks and Facilities Director that is starting on the twenty-third of September. And we've actually added a Parks and Facilities Coordinator who's going to help with programming of our parks and all of our public sites and assets throughout the township. She will start, I think, the first week of October. I can't remember exactly. So some more some more people to come on on board and and keep us moving forward.
I was wondering where the Mannion left?
Yes.
Well, that's, okay, I was surprised. I am surprised. Because I just sent a note to her the other day.
Was it in an email?
An email.
Oh, I should have gotten it, but I don't, I didn't see it come through, so I can get with you after this.
Probably have Ralph blocked. I know I do. I know I do.
I just wanted to commend the manager on filling vacancies quickly.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And I said, I wanted to commend you for filling vacancies quickly. You've done a good job with that, and that's been something that I think we've struggled with in the past.
Yep, we're trying to get creative in our recruitment. We're looking at a compensation study now township-wide to make sure we're competitive, because Cascade definitely deserves the best employees out there, so. Anything we can do to make Cascade a desirable place to work and get people to stay, I think is something that's going to be well, well-served for the whole community.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact you got a planning director on board almost as soon as you arrived. I really appreciate that. She's doing a great job.
So do I.
Oh, and just so you guys, I guess, we we should say too, in in the absence of our zoning administrator, rest assured that we are working with Danielle McKenna to pick up some more time to make sure we can fill any voids that we have, so that we don't miss a beat operationally.
Yeah, she's done a great job in all of her presentations for this board. Okay, any other comments? I just want to make one little brief announcement. At the end of the year, I will not be on the Planning Commission any longer. Kind of retiring from that. I'll still stay with the ZBA, but I'm going to be off. Getting too old for this, I guess.
Come on.
Well, we're gonna miss you up here. If I'm still here, I'll definitely just sit next to you.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
With the motion.
Motion by Member Nordike, supported by Member Reese. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?